We are searching online.
Uh, yeah, you just what what you're initially going to do is a literature review. Um, find four single case studies on your topic of some sort and you're going to write a review of the four articles.
Okay. So we are just choosing one topic.
Yes. Choosing and your intervention and your dependent variable. I did do what you put in last week's discussion, the field experience. Comment back about maybe what would be a good idea for you.
Okay, so I can use the similar like my classroom? Okay, okay, thank you. I think I have another, it is three point two discussion. Yeah, it is three point two.
Brandi, that this is like a recorded, a prepared presentation.
Okay.
Which we are recorded right now. You can ask the questions if you want, though, but just know it's recorded. I'm going to post it to announcement to all students. Do you want to ask your questions at the end when we're done?
Okay, okay, that's fine. So um. I think that was my question because I sent you an email regarding my this discussion too.
Yeah, yes. And so I just want you to put that in your discussion. So that's a good question. All discussion posts need to be put in the discussion.
Okay.
And just copy and paste that into the discussion.
Okay.
I prefer.
Okay.
And I want it to be typed into the discussion and not just not an uploaded document.
Okay, because I only I was only concerned because I don't know if I'm doing it right way, you know? So I I will upload in online discussion then, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So. And the quiz is only going to open once I'm done with the discussion.
You start telling again?
Uh, I'm just asking about the quiz. Uh, I don't see the source, resource for the quiz.
Um, okay, let me take a look here. Let's. Let me, let's take a look at how. I'm going to share my screen. I'm trying to make sure everyone knows how to access. The module content, okay. Okay. Alright, so when you come into the module, I mean to the course like this.
Yes.
Um, we should go to modules right here.
Yes.
Top corner. And say you're a module three. Or would you like to do module two and see where the video vignette was and you said you didn't see? Let's go back to two because that's the one that you did something on so you can know what kind of find it. So. Um, you have to go through, you have to review all of the. Um, parts to the module. This is the overview. And the introduction is just a short little text, not the topic. And then you click down here, you go to the module lesson. Now, the module lesson is like a whole separate HTML software. When you go to the lesson and you put start course. And you just scroll through. The module and you watch the intro video and that mostly just kind of highlights some vocabulary that you're going to want to preview before getting into the. Lecture so that you have some awareness of the terminology that I'll be using. And then you have the videos. This, I think, was the one with the vignette. Did you see this video? Well, here's where Mark's vignette was in this video here. You watch the lecture. Read the art articles that are posted and um. Just keep scrolling through the descriptions of the assignment. Confirm that you understand and then.
Yes.
Click on your different assignment. There's two lessons in this one to the second lesson. Here. This was on social validity. Discusses look with that Wolf article that was presented previously and. You're going to go here, make sure you. When you're done. You just go, you're done, you can go back to the next module. Okay?
Yes, I. The one with. Yeah, I, uh huh.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, I think, yeah, I think for for module two, I I finished everything in module two. I'm working on module three now, so, yeah.
But that was your question because I know you'd mentioned that you didn't too much.
Yeah, I I got that. Yes, thank you so much. Yes. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Alright, well, I'm going to go through my presentation and um. Then I'll take more questions.
Okay, so uh, is it going to be recorded so I can watch it later too?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you so much. Alright, bye bye.
Alright, well, I'm going to go ahead and give my presentation and. Share my screen. Right, so. We'll follow pretty similar format each. Each week for them and um, we'll go through. Getting started introduction. I'm going to talk about some points of the last module, the discussion and the quiz. And then talk about the module that you're currently on. Give you any points that I want to make, make sure that's clear for you and then. Search questions and answers. So um. I just really appreciate all of the discussion that's going on with the the two discussion posts that we've had so far. And you guys are, you all are doing a wonderful job of sticking to the content. I like seeing citations of. The articles or the chapters that you've read to support what you're saying to keep that up as you get. Maximum points for your. Contents and uh. Like you remember to commit them by Thursday to get maximum timer in this point. And reply to really in detail, even with a citation, if you're only replying to two peers or if you. Reply with three peers, you can also get much, maximize your points there. Alright, but we'll get started to be talking about what is single case research. You've had enough time now to start to get a feel for that. Basically, with single case research. We're talking about repeated measurement of the individual participant throughout its time. Understudy, so it's across time. Measuring your behavior change each day, so measuring your behavior each day if we have the behavior changing at a time. The participant serves their own control as we observe the change, which is the dependent variable. Before, during, and after the intervention has been put in place, and that intervention is our independent variable. We graph and analyze the changes in the data across the condition and remember. When we can, we'll all check each other on this just because it is, in this case, a forward, so we want to say data R. And when I sometimes say that the data. Is, but it should be the data R. And um, I want everyone to try to be better about that. As I am too. Alright, and then we're looking for replication of effects. So we want to see. Change of initial behavior. From before the intervention to after the intervention's in place. And we will see that replicated across other students or within that one student by returning back to the baseline condition. And when we're trying to intervention and getting it repeated, so the more repetitions we have, the more valid. Our results are. So now that you've had completed this portion of module two, you should be able to distinguish between independent variable, a dependent variable. Confounding variable. Now, the dependent variable, it could be defined objectively and measurably. We're saying on task is ready for work. Um, it's not very observable. I don't know when someone is ready. I can't observe readiness so much unless it is. Described, what I see when someone is ready, what is the student doing, saying, when they're ready, not what they're feeling. So I want objective description and it needs to be measurable. We're going to talk more about measure in module three. That's the topic. That's our dependence measure. This is what we call behavioral definition. So it's the key to measuring behavior change if a result for your intervention. Is that. Define behavior, that's key. There's more to measurement procedures when we preview module three. You should also be able to identify the three types of validity, importance of single case study. We'll talk about this some more in detail, but in general, we have internal validity and that's when we're confident in the. Results of our. Study and our data in that. What we say impacted the behavior change is what actually impacted the behavior change. So how do we show that? How do we show that we have experimental control? And that was only when the behavior, only when the intervention was added did the behavior change. That's another key part there. With external validity, and with single case design, it's difficult to get external validity because that means it's generalizable to larger populations. So with one student, say it worked on one student, we're not real confident it's going to work on any student. So we'll talk about that more, but really look at, we really need to have good descriptions of our participants, their level, their skill level, ability intervention. And we need to have a number of replications of a study over, over different. Schools and other students and different resources. And then we talked about this module about social validity. And we'll cover that a little bit in more detail if we talk about this module, but that just means that the goals, procedures, and outcomes of. The study were um, acceptable and important to society. Alright, so the key to single case research is replication. You may hear that a lot. If you're ever in doubt about how to answer a question. Try replication. When I back and figure out how that's. If it's related to single case research. Alright, but um. Basically, the logic of single case research design is that um. We have to describe the behavior, well, that definition, and then we get baseline data to show what level is that. Then we predict. What would happen if. We put an intervention in place, so we want to see if that indeed happens, and then we want to test it. Get that replication of the effect. We want to return back to baseline conditions and see if the data returned to the baseline level. And then do another replication back to the intervention and check that data and see if. They return to intervention. Doing what? We also want to make sure we have control over the variable. The only variable we want to change between a baseline condition. And an intervention condition is. That independent variable, that intervention is the only thing we want to change. So there was a little bit of a confounding variable in Mark's vignette. If you remember, they had a plan of reinforcement for Mark if he. Completed his math or met the behavioral goal. And he did. And so they wanted to see how that would be the external validity on that and extend it to a different behavior. I think it was spelling. And there's a problem there because there was a confounding variable. What was the other variable involved that could have contributed to the change in behavior? In a way, it was different from what the teachers were doing. Right, this parent offered that trip to fever point, but that could have been a confounding variable. So we're really not sure about how much that influenced. The study. And what they really wanted to know is if that, who gave your plan worked, so they could use it coming in their skill. But for the sake of internal and external validity, we have to replicate anyway. How we know that replication of effect, so they can give it a try on spelling and they'll know if it doesn't work, still have to look into that. Okay, so that's just the terminology we were looking at for module two. Also started looking at what your field experience was just. Observing in your own class and thinking about environmental arrangements to your population, interventions that. School has initiated or what you're doing and behaviors that you want to address in the classroom. So looking at all of those things. Can help you to think about what a potential topic might be. And it doesn't have to be based on a category of disability, but some of the. Practices that there, there's a lot of evidence in single page research for um, is peer tutoring, self-management. Um, social narratives, which is sometimes called social stories, video modeling, even visual supports, using structured work systems. Um, pivotal response training, time delay procedures, task analysis, different prompting procedures. Um, in more with uh, co-taught or. Some general curriculum areas, different evidence-based strategies like the SRSD model for teaching writing. Having the strategy instruction, teaching learning strategies for students to approach problems, their math or reading. That strategy instruction, using mnemonics to help them learn their vocabulary, here's the learning strategy, which will be. Work well reading policy, top wide search tutoring, math, you have the concrete representation abstracts. Teaching method for math, that's a popular one. So those are just some ideas, but I gave feedback on your. Uh, field experience reports from last week, so if you look at those and. See what I thought and what you put that you potentially could pick as your intervention. But when you're posting this week. Um, if you post your topic, I want you to post your intervention and the behavior you want that intervention to reflect. So it's really how you have to put. It's your idea for an intervention and a behavior that you want to do. I'd like to see you define that behavior. Okay, objective and measurable. Observable. So I want to take a look at quiz two. Um, I can just, I want to point out before we go look at it, internal validity. Not last, a little more time for today. Refers to the investigator asserting what they thought about the effect of the inspection. And the outcome. So are the outcomes observed due to their experimental manipulation? Are they due to some extreme variables or process? And I want to say that fidelity of implementation is important to support validity. Because implementation fidelity. Or procedural reliability, same thing. That's the degree to which the intervention is delivered as intended. And is critical to the successful translation of this space practices in the practice. Of this based intervention in the actual practice. So it's important that when you write up your proposal that you describe in detail, what you'll do for your intervention and then a way to. Check off that you did it in that way. That would be how you support the fidelity of your implementation, the part to support your internal validity. Alright, let's look at quiz two. Here we go. Alright, here we have a question. What baseline logic applies to single case design research? Well, baseline logic is, it does involve baseline data, but it is not the same thing. So just collecting baseline data, it does not. Describe what baseline logic is. Baseline logic regard for participants serving as their control. To indicate the effect of an independent variable on the dependent variable. You want to compare the data of the dependent variable prior to intervention, levels of behavior prior to the intervention to the data. Of the behavior or dependent variable after any change. We want to make sure that you can show a functional relation, that means replication, replicating those things. At least three times. And we're going to get into that more, but well, that is what baseline logic is. Um, just having students prepare themselves, subject control without intervention to their own behavior. We have those two ways to evidence-based practices were disseminated, and that was in the lecture. Journal, professional journals that are peer-reviewed, professional conferences like the T E C, annual convention and expo. And the what works. We're going to be looking at some of the standard in the what works by house or different designs, whether in the source following those. Standards for determining if something is an evidence-based practice. And the new system is going to send articles that will be read. So hopefully that'll help you be a good critical consumer of the research. You heard the Wolf nineteen seventy eight article, which was a seminal article about social validity in the field of behavior analysis. And since we're very so specific and behavior analysis, everything was objective, everything's objective and observable. How can we assess social validity being most objective chief of the research results? Um, so that was really the problem that Don Bear Fowen, he said um. He will, that the applied nature of applied behavior in office, that well, that was behavior is a problem of social importance, which. How do we decide if it's sort of sort of. From what's objective. He was afraid he would get criticized. But indeed, he did not, it has become more and more important over the years, so. We will have to think about social validity when we propose down the research. Alright, and here we just have to differentiate between independent and dependent variable, so which is which? The variable that is manipulated is the independent variable, because your intervention was not in place during the baseline condition. But then you put it in place, and then you pull it out and you put it in place. But you're in control of that independent variable. For all time, whether you're no intervention, your intervention, the dependent measure. And the independent variable is always the same. So whether you're in the baseline condition or your intervention condition. You will be measuring the exact same behavior at the exact same time. And that's that liability measurement that's so important, that we want to know that when we compare. One condition to an intervention condition that we measure it the exact same way so that we can. Um, compare the results and see a difference in what it's saying, a different. So the experimental research study, the independent variables manipulated, see what effect it has on the dependent variable. And then the dependent variable in Mark's vignette was, it never has come to say that. So, there we have it. Um, I think what I have next on my PowerPoint is to talk about the discussion. Alright, for module two online discussion, we uh, read the Kaufman at all article and. Talk about, you know, some of some evidence-based practices. So like through. Research and through to what we're starting up, we consolidate all of the data on certain interventions and can. Determine whether certain interventions have enough evidence that they are performing evidence-based practice. And ethically, as educators, we are required to. Only use evidence-based practices. Um, so um, that's our ethical obligation, but of course, we, you know, talk about having cultural sensitivity. And then Kaufman article says that, you know, it is important, but we shouldn't over generalize stereotypes. From certain cultures, I think of cultures just by the race difference. So it is, you know, each person has their own different traditions and culture and. Family culture and routines and thoughts and ways of interacting. So um. You know, to what extent can we take culture into account while still following our ethical obligations, whose effective teaching has been? And like I said, ethically, we're it, we're supposed to use positive behavior uh, support, positive behavior support. Support like reinforcement, teaching returner behaviors, reinforcement returner behaviors, and not relying on punishment procedures. But sometimes, you know, a certain person of a certain culture may find that that's. Not culturally appropriate to allow certain behavior to occur and not be punishing it. So where do we fall there and how do we reconcile that? You know, I think that ultimately, it is very important that we. Make a priority to use evidence-based practices. And then you have to consider social validity, what means about what social validity is, the social validity of our intervention. We can then apply some of the cultural people to rather which, which intervention we choose. Perhaps we have a number of interventions to choose from. We can use um, the children, the families, the new teachers. Impressions and feelings about the intervention based on the social validity. Alright, so have, and I wanted you, uh, once you post in the discussion, a lot of times you can see a post to iPhone, and I hope that you'll read that. Don't think about what I said, how it relates to what you said, and you can kind of make that comparison, whether you're on the right track or on a different track, and. You can reply to my post and pose something different that you felt in the discussion, have a conversation about that, and I really appreciate. When people uh, show my discussion, post them up. So feel free to reply to my post once you. But we have to, in terms of the topic here. Um, how do we know if a teaching method is socially valid? First, we consider a mother point that Kaufman all made. We mustn't over generalize a cultural norm to an individual's race, gender, religion. We must suppose the individual family perspective over. Getting to a technicality to the group of people, which are different things, people. We must collaborate and communicate with all stakeholders to determine instructions, personal validity. And the stakeholders of the parents, nearly to the children, anyone else that is interacting with the student while they are giving individuals a commitment. So um, build relationships with the students or families, the community, so all to determine how acceptable our intervention. Are. So we can choose the one that's both effective and important in our community. Social validity procedures, that's the second part of this. Question, they're outlined for single case research. So we should be surveying our stakeholders by getting their input. And there are three. Parts of social validity that we should be getting input about. The first one is the appropriateness of our goal. We're trying to have students change behavior and reach a certain level of behavior. So how do you do, for example, I got this out of the Wolf article, how do you determine the social importance of. Um, affection. If someone wanted to improve. The affection, is that important in the family? Touching, smiling, and hugging? What could you do to see if that's politically valid? We can observe. Other parent-child interaction for that same age to see if that's a way that other people are engaging. You can create reliable definitions of the behavior so that, you know, you're going to be. Collecting data on it reliably, and you want to have others rate the instructions of the action. You also want to think about the acceptability of the intervention. Or maybe it costs too much, or it's too difficult. Or maybe it costs too much, or it's too difficult to implement in a full class. Or maybe it's super easy and it's very highly rated as innovation that teachers want to put into place, but that's within all those students. So can ask the teacher or ask the parent if they feel like that the intervention is acceptable in terms of, if they would be wrong to put it in the place. And the importance of the effect of the intervention. So all of the consumers that apply with results. Um, so given students who have some, maybe some behaviors that maybe um, a student likes to put things in their mouth, but they put their hand in their mouth all the time. They, they have a job, got a job at the grocery store or a restaurant. And, um, we want to address that behavior. When a student is able to do great things, hand in his mouth, that work from like a rate of um, five times a minute to one time a minute. Uh, would the restaurant manager or grocery store manager feel like that was okay? Like, that's an acceptable amount of times that someone put their hand in their mouth in the food industry? So it's a great impact that whatever intervention might do for putting a hand in your mouth, but if every minute you're, you know, you cook, how you clean, then that can be still problematic. So we want to make sure that it's because we see an effect that it's one worthwhile. Um, and then also when you're surveying people, you want to make sure you're not politicking in surveys that in the process that you can consider the cultural implications of interventions we use. You want to make sure people can answer honestly and anonymously if necessary, but no pressure to say the fact that if they don't think that the outcomes are um acceptable or um so we've got to make sure that those procedures are feasible and acceptable. All right, and so, um, coming up, you will have to post your suggested topic, which is going to include an intervention in a behavior, defined behavior. So, um, I know I made a different slide on it. We've already talked about it. I'm going to, uh, can post them up. I can post the PowerPoint of the video, and then you can see this list if you want to pick from it. If you don't already have some good ideas from my feedback from your field experience uh permission for module two. All right. All right, so I guess with no one here, there are no questions about module two. Um, I'll go on to talk about what's coming up, right? Right, so according to Super at All twenty twenty, which by the way is a suggested type book that I put down here, it was required to buy it. I do recommend that you try to get it and have it, um, if you didn't already get it for the uh functional behavior session, of course. That strategy, behavior change, I know that was a suggested text in that course as well. You don't have to get the most recent edition, you can get the previous edition. Um, this is most of the concepts are the things I think they might have just added some more modern like epic chapters and some more advances in applied behavior analysis. So in terms of the single case research, I think the only change there is just more technology to graph. But otherwise, everything, we would get an older version, and it could still help you, and you don't have to pay the money for it. But anyway, I refer to it a lot, and it might be helpful. Measurement is the basis for all scientific discoveries. It's the foundation for applied behavior analysis and the key component of experimental single case design measure. To inform the internal validity of a study's result, we must establish that data are collected reliably and transparently. How do we establish that they're reliable? The researcher must define the behavior such that it can be observed by more people with a brain. Which should have been released as a behavior first, then to the other. So the topic of this module is your dependent variable. Your dependent variable is the behavior that you intend to change through your intervention. Now, your dependent measure is how you measure that behavior. So your dependent variable is going to be your objective, observable, observable behavior. Your dependent measure is going to be a more difficult, harder measure. Um, and that's all very important. With the definition of behavior and appropriate and purposeful measurement of that behavior is going to help you have reliability in the collection, that is key to ensuring internal validity in fact, for for your statement of belief. So why you have a whole module that's internal. Um, that will be very well, a dependent measure. So the behavior can come in. The researcher relies on the personal thing for whether the behavior is regular observations may result in observer drift if you have subjective measures. So for these reasons, not only do you have to collect data on the behavior part, but you have to get internal observer agreement data. At least twenty percent of the sessions to indicate that the data measures are accurate, and you need to go on about the top time. So that means a second observer comes in and collects data right alongside you at the exact same time. And you will compare your data on that session to their data on that session, and then you will see if it's at least eighty percent agree. So out of ten pieces of data, eight are worth it. Okay. That's what this module is going to do. So let me ask you a bunch. How many hours did you sleep last night? What is your purpose of one of these? What was your goal for sleep? I may have gotten eight hours of sleep last night, but I wasn't sleeping well. So that's pretty subjective. But I will have to really define sleep. Say it was eight hours. Because being in the bed with my eyes shut for eight hours sleep, then yes, I would say I got eight hours of sleep. And seeing um eight hours without having conscious thoughts, then for me, how much screen time you had last week? All right, so we have different ways that we collect data. Let me check it. Hello? All right, so, um, how do we define dependent variable retarder behavior in Markston yet completing math work in a specific time period with a mastery criteria set to an accuracy to control the problem? Note that this target behavior includes three dimensions, the number of problems to be completed, the specified time period in which to complete them, and the level of accuracy. But to simplify the data collection, if you have reliable data, you can't have it overly complicated. The teacher decides to record and graph the number of problems completed correctly within the allotted. So number of problems completed correctly. It's the dependent variable. What is the goal with increased reading frequency? How might you pick a um, more dependent variable base? So the behavior would be reading words correctly. Accurately. And certainly properly. You would measure that with words read correctly per minute. You would count, you would have a student read for a minute, and you would count how many words are read correctly during that minute. Now let me ask you this, is that a rate or a percent? Well, if a rate is when you have a frequency count that's based on a certain amount of time. And percent is when you have a frequency count that's based on a certain number of opportunities. So what would you say words read correctly in a minute is? The rate, right? Because we have a limited amount of time. How about we give someone a math prop, a math worksheet and said, you want to know how many they got correct out of twenty? Right? So that would be a percent, because that's a limited number of opportunities, twenty opportunities to get one there. What if the goal was time on tap? Well, you might break up your time, if you're observation into intervals, and you're marking each interval for students on task during that interval. But say you had a thirty-minute observation, and you broke up your interval from a three-minute interval. You watch it, so the student was on task the whole three minutes, they got that occurrence. So for every three minutes, you have ten three-minute blocks, ten opportunities to be scored as on tap. So then you would call a percent. That's right, you have a percent of interval one, because you have a limited number of opportunities each interval. So you just really have to think about it. Okay. So we want our definitions at the review, we want definitions to be observable, so you're going to describe what they look like and what they don't look like. Give an example. You want to make sure it's the way that something you can measure. How do you measure? Well, we have the event-based measurement, that's the event reporting frequency count, rate percentage, or your interval is getting. Or you might have a time-based measuring system. And that's when you have a timer, and you're getting a duration. So you just say, okay, the student has any tantrum, start, tantrum ended, stop. You know, the time-based measure of how long that tantrum lasted. Or if we give you a distraction, start your timer. Five minutes later, the student picks up its pencil and starts your stuff. Legacy, five minutes, time-based. So that's really what we're, the module is about, how to define that behavior in observable and measurable ways, and picking a measurement system so that you can collect data. A very important module. If you have any questions, you can let me know. You're also going to be continuing to work on your topic. So we'll put your feedback from module two, from experience, and think about what intervention you would like to test and the behavior you want to test it on. This does not have to be real. You can do this based on real participation in your classroom. You don't have to, you're never going to have to implement nurse research proposals. You're just proposing research. You can use your classroom as a model, and you would always be sending them for students because you want to have permission to talk about them with their names, uh, the story they are, but you can have that information in your head while you're proposing your research. Or you may just want to come up with something that interests you, that doesn't have anything to do with the professor. Maybe something you felt very interesting um years ago, or something that happened here, but you need to do particularly more interventions and your defined behavior. And if you have either a sore topic, it's like, it's interesting, but not a qualitative question, not a question like do students prefer pens or pencils, or what's the best intervention for um students who are on their phone? I don't want a question like that. I want to know, does, um, having a charging station in class degrades students' time on their phone. Um, intervention, and I want a behavior, okay? Specific intervention or practice that you're going to put in place to change that behavior that you um, feel like wouldn't be socially valid, okay? And that is it. That's actually the end of my prepared presentation. I'm probably going to ask questions and answers. So if you ask questions, you want me to answer, but if you get questions along the way, um, send specific questions to me so that I can answer them, or come to my um, session, and I'm always here during that time to answer your questions. All right, and I want to put you on that wonderful review. Happy holiday. Bye.